Welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Sessions, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First up is Roscommon County Transit Authority reappointment. Steve?
Good morning, everybody. Well, basically, I'm here this morning. We have four members of our board that would like to be reappointed to our board. We have Sherry Johnson, which is a member serving as a member, a member at large, Richard Copel filling the position of the Economic Development Portion, Albert Schultz, our representative from the Commission on Aging, and Sean Petrie, our representative for schools.
How long this is for?
These are two-year appointments.
Two years.
Correct.
Any questions? Make sure your mic's in.
I know three of the gentlemen personally, and they're all excellent candidates.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. Thank you. Quick and painless.
Number two nominations for twenty twenty-three Person of the Year, Mark Melbourne.
Mr. Chair, do any of the commissioners have any nomination for Person of the Year for twenty twenty-three?
Not this year.
Only focus on this year right now. I have one gentleman, Charles Chuck Carlone. The guy's known personally, he's an outstanding candidate. He, just in twenty twenty-two alone, he logged in over a thousand volunteer hours. He's received two Presidential Volunteer Service Awards from the President twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen. It is great honor and pleasure to present him as the next Person of the Year. All I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions regarding?
When will we be voting on that?
Next week.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, number three, Labor Union Benefits, Jody Valentino.
Good morning. I did send all of you out a packet, and for pure transparency, I also sent that to all of our representatives along the back row. So there's your negotiations. Obviously, the board had put forth through the Personnel Committee two options for our POAM and COAM Sheriff's Department unions. The first one is referenced as Alternative One, and that is no change to the employee in their insurances, bringing on an embedded coinsurance maximum for the county, and a five percent employee paid premium. The second alternative was a change in co-pay structures that increased five, ten, fifteen dollars for primary specialist urgent care and includes the embedded insurance. That was no employee premium presented, so there would not be for the union the five percent out of pocket. That being said, that was presented by the unions to their participants, and they provided back to the Board of Commissioners alternatives that was presented to you in the memo. Both of those are slightly different than what the board had presented. So now you guys are in a position of deciding if you will be accepting those, if you will be turning those down, or if you will be offering a counter to the unions. So really, it's up to your discussion at this point. Obviously, the slightly difference between the COAM and the POAM, but I wanted to note that with the way that the language is written in the COAM and POAM contracts, a raise for the command actually necessitates a raise for the POAM as well. So you can't do one without raising the other because of the way those contracts are linked. Additionally, if we do nothing, or don't make a decision by the time it's time to approve the budget, they will automatically be placed in Alternative One with no five percent. So now it's up to you guys.
I have some questions. I submitted those, Jody, to you via email, and I believe you were going to get back to me.
I did not get any questions from you, Commissioner Ostergrind.
Yes, in fact, you responded to me, and you said you were going to be getting back to me later.
Actually, all of the information is in the packets that I sent you.
In this, in this packet that we got?
Yes. What were your, what were your questions? I can probably answer them right now, hopefully.
I apologize.
What were, what was the question?
Well, the difference between the percentages, what the costs, what the cost factors were.
Oh, yes. There is, you had a Excel spreadsheet that was provided to you in the package, and there is a difference over current that shows you like option A versus what the current is, option A, two percent, option A, three percent, option B, option B, one percent. It's a small chart that kind of you just follow along to tell what each one is.
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't see it in the packet.
It would have been, I'm not sure.
That was a week ago, or?
No, that was just Monday. It would have been Attachment C, maybe? Yeah, you don't have it. It's just an email that I sent out to them. I, yeah, I printed out exactly what I gave, what I sent to you from the email, just to be sure that I was looking at the same thing.
Okay.
That would have actually been Attachment, I believe, Attachment C to the email.
Okay, thank you. When will we be making a decision on that, then?
So you actually need to provide an answer today to what direction you would like to have me give a written response back to. Obviously, you don't vote on anything until it's finalized, but we need that information in order to budget, and you have to have the budget approved by November thirtieth.
I hear it is. Okay, thank you.
Your feelings?
You know, Mr. Chair, I usually am one of the first people to talk. This isn't a good thing or a bad thing, it's just kind of what it is. I'd like to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say before I give my.
Really? You got to turn your mic in.
I'd like to look at it a little bit. I'm not totally opposed at one of the options, but I'm not saying that I'm a hundred percent for either of the options either. I think I want to have a few more clarifications on final costs and breakdowns and things like that. But I know exactly how it's, being new to this.
I need time to print this out, review it. From what I've seen right now, it looks like I would rather entertain a counter proposal.
I, I'm curious, Jody, why, why do we have two, two options? I've just, why not one option, and that's what they want? I'm, I'm, I'm kind of like a little bit mystified on why there's two different options that they're offering back to us.
Well, that wouldn't be a question.
And I, and I think we need to take good care of these folks.
So that would not be a question for me, because I don't come up with the offers. That would be a question for your union.
Since this is the work session, are they here?
Yeah, a lot of them, yes.
We talked to a couple of the leaders? Right, I understand. I, well, I understand that. That's.
They're basically giving you two different options, and they're willing.
Which one do you guys like? That's what I'd like to know.
One saves you the most money.
Which one is that, Jody?
That would, between what they offered to us?
Yes, the two, between the two options, he just said whichever one saves us the most money.
That would be if you went down with the option B, the Alternative B, and, well, which union are we talking about? The POAM offered the option differently, but, so you'd be going with Option B. I'm going to tell you that if you want to save the county money, I gave you two recommendations. The first recommendation is you do the option Alternative B with the increased co-pays, lock in the insurance, and no additional rates, because your additional raise is where you're going to increase money.
Right, that's, that's what I, that's what I was looking at, but I, but I don't, if they want an additional raise, I have no opposition to that either. That's why, that's why I wanted to find out which, which one do you folks want?
Well, I'm sure.
Of the two options. Anybody, can anybody respond to that? Which one would benefit? You know, I'm a big supporter of the base and, and the unions and everything else, and I want to make sure that you guys get what you want, so, so we retain you here, okay, for the county. I think that, I think that that's what the important thing is. So I want to know which, which, which one of these options would you folks want?
As a union, we voted to. But you can't, members of, members of POAM here, you really can't, everybody, other than those two options.
Okay, so the, of the two people, can I talk to one and then the other, and get the response from the one or the other? Which ones do I like?
I think.
Being in union and stuff, they can't really.
The union right now.
Yeah, they can't.
Yeah, we have to choose between, you have to choose between what they have presented to you.
Yep.
Of A and B. And do you want to go with those? Do you want to counteroffer, or do you want to deny both of them?
Myself, I'm comfortable with B. If yous want, we could even next week, since this is a time-sensitive call, special meeting. We want to work on it next week. I don't want to wait two weeks on this.
I think that would give me, I think.
Yeah, we need a little more time.
Just because. How about next Wednesday at nine AM?
Second.
Oops, I should be. Are you available that day, Jody? Mark, are you available? Rex? Are you available? It'll be the twentieth. Oh, excuse me, yeah, the twentieth.
I can do that.
Okay, let's have a special meeting regarding this on September twentieth at nine AM in this room.
And, and can we get the representatives from the union here, so we can talk to them also?
We can make that request. I don't know.
I'd really like, I'd really like to know, you know, what's, you know, what your thoughts are. Okay. Will you be able to have somebody here that can, that can respond and give us, you know, what their feelings are about it, because?
It takes the whole union, Eric. One person can't make decisions like that.
Right, but they can go back to their union and ask them. They can ask their members.
Not without having a meeting with their union, they can't first. And they've already had a meeting and presented to the board their options for you to make decisions on. So the way labor negotiations works is they present an option, you guys decide what you're going to do with that, and then you bring that back. So.
Yeah, I understand perfectly well how negotiations work.
Chairman, I appreciate the commissioners' eagerness to bring this topic up, and I appreciate all questions.
Well, next Wednesday, nine AM, special meeting here regarding that topic. Thank you. Number four, twenty twenty-four Gypsy Moth Milage Proposal. Eric?
The twenty twenty-four Gypsy Moth Proposal?
Yep.
I haven't had a chance to look at it. I didn't even know when, was this in our packet?
No, it's something you wanted to put on milage together and?
Oh, yeah, we were going to, we, yeah, we were going to be talking about increasing it back up to where it originally was four, or five, or six years ago. Isn't that correct, Jody?
It's my understanding that that was the wish of the board, that it needed to be brought back. I mean, surely, based on the figures that we saw, we don't have enough money to spray if we have large years like we've had. So you would essentially be doubling it, and it would just be then we could put on a motion, if the board so chooses, to adopt the language for the ballot for the, do they know when that first election is yet? Okay, so I guess we'd have to word it as the first, how would you word that? So, since we're still not a hundred percent sure if the prime, presidential primary is going to be February twenty-seventh or March twelfth, what I've been, when I've been talking to the townships and they've asked about it, I've just been suggesting to them to adopt two resolutions with both dates, and then that way, whichever one is correct is correct, and then the other one is not valid. So, because the deadline is December fifth or February twenty-seventh. But just trying to, you know, at that time of year, it's hectic for us at the count, on the county level with doing budget stuff and everything like that. So then having to try to throw in special meetings and such, I would just recommend that if you're going to do that for any proposals to be placed on the presidential primary ballot, I would, I would recommend doing two separate resolutions, one with the February twenty-seventh date, one with the March twelfth date, and then that way, we're covered for the deadline.
Jody, can we have that in two weeks?
Yes, yep, and just.
I said so.
Yeah, I would like, I think everybody knows my feelings on the Gypsy Moth program.
Did you get everybody, yeah?
And just so for the monetary, just for instance, our projected collection amount, based on the current milage with the rollback, is two hundred and one thousand, six sixty-five, eighty-six. So we'd be doubling that, is what you're asking. Okay, so we were putting it on for a quarter mil, and I will get that language together and get it out to you guys.
Then we'll vote on it in two weeks.
Yes.
Thank you.
What was important to me on this, of course, was the fact that, that I learned in the last meeting, is this, the mon, the milage money cannot go to anything else but the Gypsy Moth program.
Yeah, and that's the only way it could be done. Yep. If it's like that in a proposal, it can't be used for anything else. Number five, twenty twenty-four Headley Restoration Milage Proposal. Rex?
Yeah, I think we need to come up with something to run the ballot for the next election, regardless the date of it. I think at this time, we need to have specific things we want, just to address, rather than just saying for the general budget. There's a lot of things in the budget that, if we have to start making cuts again, are going to be axed, and some of them might have big ticket items.
You put the specific things in writing for the members, and we could just discuss it in two weeks and then vote on it. We'll still have plenty of time.
Okay.
Is this something we could also talk about in the next special meeting? Have both of those on the, on the agenda in the next meeting? So just one topic?
I, I wouldn't recommend it, Mr. Chair.
No, in two weeks, we still have enough time before this has to be written off.
I appreciate your, your passion, but special meeting really should focus just on one item only.
Okay, okay.
It's not the money of the waters.
But we still have time, so we could discuss it in two weeks if Rex could put something together, what he's looking at. And we'll still be in good shape for the February ballot.
Okay.
Okay.
Other commissioners, I guess, contact me if you have ideas on what we should be going for.
You're looking at separate line items versus one big group, basically. I could live with that. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
One of the other things that has been brought to me, and I believe Rex has maybe heard this as well, is that MSUE has discussed whether or not the Board of Commissioners would like to entertain the notion to bring MSUE as a special milage.
And they could bring that to us.
And that could, and that could include economic development, that could include oversight of Gypsy Moth again. It would include 4H, because this year, we were blessed that Michigan State University covered the program for 4H, but they don't have money to do that next year. So that's kind of important, important for the board to be aware of. But that could be a contract shaped by this board and the needs of the county. If you wanted like a Lake Expert or anything like that included in, those are all options that you would have as well.
And nowadays, a lot of people are doing that. They're doing, instead of BALK, they're doing line items in elections like that. Yes.
Appreciate Jody bringing that up. I know that I've suggested the Economic Development Board, I see Brendan's here today, that we do a special milage just for economic development. That would ensure that, that organization is properly funded. As Eric mentioned earlier, all monies would go to economic development, there would be no side cash. So I think it would be a great idea, is an option, sort of a heavily rollback Restoration Milage request, to do something like MSU, Economic Development. That way, voters know exactly where the money goes. It's my thoughts, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Sounds good.
I think that's a great idea. I'd like to add that, that's.
Yeah, separate line items like that. Anything else from this board regarding that? With that being said, ten AM. Excuse me, welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Meeting, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can we stand for a pledge? Herb, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Prove all of the agenda. Oh, roll call, excuse me.
Ostergrind.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Wolfson.
Melbourne.
Russo.
Here.
Prove all of the agenda. I'll second that. Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrind.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Number five, approve all the amendments for eight fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, and the special meeting on eight twenty-three of twenty-three, regular meeting. I'll make that motion in a sec.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion out there? Clear call roll, please.
Wolfson. Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Ostergrind.
Yes.
Number six, Class A Claims and Accounts.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of four hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars and forty-five dollars and eighteen cents.
I have a second out there.
A second.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Ostergrind.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Number seven, public comment.
Hold on, got to do Claims and Accounts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to approve Claims and Accounts in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Discussion.
Want to even have a motion or a second?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion out there? Clear call roll, please.
Ostergrind.
Yes.
Wolfson. Censor.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Number seven, public comment. Any public comment? Andy, is there anybody? Number eight, Administrator Controller's Report.
Good morning again. Quick lawsuit update. The Courage versus Roscommon County Treasurer, this is in regards to the tax foreclosure properties. As you know, there are several other cases that kind of interplay with this that will affect that final outcome. One of those courses is Freed versus Thomas, which was in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. They did issue an opinion, and there's kind of a mixed bag of goods. The first one, which is, which is positive, is that the county treasurers, as individuals, do have qualified immunity, so they cannot be individually held accountable. So that's positive. I'm sure Rebecca Breese has eye of release, because essentially, what they said was they were following state statutes, which they must. So the second portion of that is that the counties will have municipal liability, i.e., yes, we will have to pay people back, basically, is what they have said. However, the plus to that is the decision about fair market or not fair market was decided, and the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals stated that it will not be reimbursable at a fair market value. It would be for that difference, but there may be interest accrued as well until that payment is finally made back. Additionally, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals also stated that the whole tax foreclosure process in general is not punitive. It's a failure to do A, B, C equals D. So those are positive things. Chill versus Roscommon County, we do have a pretrial set for November sixteenth at two PM. The opiate suit, we do not have any new update. We've submitted the Walgreens, and like I said, we're just kind of collecting that money until such time that the board wants to move forward with that. There's no timetable on when you have to spend it, just that it has to be spent on some very specific things. So waiting is an okay thing. Plus, the, the more you get into that pot, the better idea of where you want to allocate that cost to. Special Assessment Projects, Holton Lake, on Friday, we had a meeting with the Holton Lake assessors for discussion of what information can be provided for deciding factors for the board to determine what that apportionment will look like. Rex did actually attend with me. He's got a lot of knowledge from when he was rank commissioner and put at that, so I am grateful to have had them. There was some, some mixed bags from the local assessors. They only have limited amount of information in their programs, which is fine. I assured them that all we were asking for was what they had, not for them to go out and find information, that that's something that obviously will be included in a different process. We're just asking for the information they already have that we know will be accurate. Lake St. Helen, we still have a hearing date set for December fifteenth, and then on Higgins Lake, obviously, the hearing date is set for this Friday at nine thirty AM. The Board of Commissioners and then any support staff, i.e. like Julie Tatro, who's the assessor, will be in the jury box, so that we will make sure that there are plenty of seats for everyone that wants to attend. That being said, bring snacks if we're allowed to eat in court. So I think it will be a busy day. Lake Levels, St. Helen is actually oddly over one point five six inches above. There are three boards removed in the spillways on each side, but the water is actually backed up from the riverside, so they're open, but nothing's slowing down. So I don't know if you've got more beavers loose than St. Helen. Yep, okay. Higgins is at three point nine six inches below, and all of the gates are closed. Again, I know that we have discussed a couple of options to the board in regards to looking at the concerns for the uncontrolled spillway that moves forward. So I would urge you to continue to, to research those. Holton Lake is one point two inches below, and all of the boards are closed on Holton Lake. Legislative update, there is a continued push for the statewide septic that is going to, they were trying to fast-track it, is my understanding, but it's met some resistance from some lobbyist groups as it goes through. But we have been told by our MAC representatives that this is a bill that we will probably see by the beginning of next year. It'll be interesting. A little bit of things that have happened through the week. I know that there were some questions on spicers and when they would be presenting. They have actually requested and decided, because obviously, I can't make them do anything, they are going to present an open webinar. And this would be something that would be an invitation to all members of the Higgins Lake community, but invitations would go specifically out to people in the proposed Higgins Lake Special Assessment District, because obviously, they have the most invested interest in understanding. They have the first week of October slated. When they provide an agenda, I ask that that be provided to me directly, so that I can send it to the Board of Commissioners, so that you are first aware of what their intentions are. The idea is still to look at the two thousand and ten study, the most recent update that they provided, and additionally, to kind of do a little bit more education on Higgins Lake in general, and what Springfield means, how we lose water, how we take in water, and those types of natures as well. I have been working on analyzing our two thousand and twenty-three budget, looking at where we could anticipate to be at the end of the year. I have been working on analyzing our 2023 budget, looking at where we could anticipate to be at the end of the year. It's not going to be great and it's not going to be horrible, but as I'm going through things, I will tell you that there's a, there's a change, there's a switch in where, where we're allowed to collect revenues, specifically in district court. And that is not something that we can control, nor can district courts or the judges control. Those are based on state mandates. Michelle's office is still doing well, but there was kind of a decrease in some of our, some of the register of deeds activity over what we have anticipated as the real estate market has actually slowed. So there are some, some kind of major changes that we've seen. The positive side of that is, and Danielle, I'll use yours as an example, a majority of the expenses that are being saved, for instance, in district court will offset probably at least 80% of that shortfall. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. And Michelle's office is also running in that same direction. So for those areas where we're seeing that kind of difference between what we thought would be brought in as revenue versus what we're seeing, they seem to be making it up. It's just, it's never good to see those negative numbers as you're going through. So I will finalize everything in a summary for you and get that out to you by, by fund and department shortly. We've begun the budget process for 2024. I had provided a calendar to all of you last month. That is the timetable of how we get to November 3rd with the 10-day notice that has to appear in the paper, allowing for public comment on the budget for concerns. And then following two weeks later would, would allow then the Board of Commissioners to approve the budget. In order to do that, the biggest chunk that my office needs, that my department has and other elected officials need is where are we aiming for non-union, union races? And where are we going with fringe benefits, healthcare, obviously dental and vision, there's no change. That's roughly 70% of most of our budgets that they go through. So if I look... If you have questions, if you ask questions, I will prioritize that for you, because that is, that is what we all need. So ideally to stay on track, having that special meeting is great. So I appreciate that. That being said, I do know that you are going to be discussing later on under unfinished business ideas for a 2024 wage increase. What I will tell you, since I have three new board members, is whatever you ask me to try to hit is not locked in stone and there's not a member, there's not an employee here that doesn't know that there's a goal, but we might not be able to reach that goal based on our expenses. Of course, everybody would love to have a 10% increase. Who wouldn't love a 10% increase? But we are all practical. And additionally, I mean, I can tell you, obviously, 10% increase would not go fit into the budget in any way, shape or form. But until we get those numbers in with the needed expenses of the departments, we don't know if it's really feasible or not, because they're, they're the specialists in their department of the trends that are going to be coming down. So... I did have a nice meeting with Diane Randall, who is the Roscommon Township Supervisor. That was at her request. She just had some concerns, some questions in regards to how the Board of Commissioners was moving forward with the Holton Lake Special Assessment District project. She is also the assessor for Roscommon Township and did very graciously volunteer to help with gathering any information that another assessor may not be able to provide to us. So her dedication to her township is, is appreciated. No, it's nice. I learned some of her concerns and can pass those on. As you all know, we have lots of FOIA requests for odd strange things coming in recently. So I've been busy with those and catching up and Michelle's office has been helping where they can. So I appreciate it. And Andy, thanks, Andy. Discussions with unions. Spongey Moth crews have actually started working for surveying. They started about two weeks ago. However, despite the advertisements in the paper and indeed, and online, we actually received no new applications for that. Therefore, they are only running with three full-time and three part-time to do the entirety of the county. So if you know anybody that even wants to work part-time walking through the woods, let us know. So that helps the process along. They work as long and as hard as they can. Daniel, who is our specialist, he is authorized for and budgeted for overtime for anybody and everybody that wants to work it. We even give holiday pay to the part-time and people when they're here, just to try to make this job a little bit more palatable for them. It just doesn't seem like anybody, you know, the workplace in general is there. There were no temporary staffing agencies that were available to provide for us. Colleges don't have any programs. So if you know anybody, send them our way. And then the final thing that I would like to just kind of go there with all of you is when, when we are looking at some of, some of the budgetary processes that move forward with that, we do have on that calendar specific meetings for the Budget and Finance Committee, which is Commissioner Ostergren and Commissioner Russo. So if the dates on that calendar, those days are not going to work for you, the sooner you let me know, the better. That's when traditionally we'll go through, I'll go through and I'll input what has been provided by the departments to us. And then we'll actually have a list that basically says like, okay, here's what the department requested, but is it feasible? The departments will provide, for instance, if a bill has anything in maintenance that you know specifically, they'll provide us that detail of why. There needs to be an extra line for that or why there's a sudden increase, but for the most part, we just do our very best to look through everything. But if those dates don't work, please let me know as soon as possible so that we can schedule those out. So that's all.
Have some questions?
Yes.
The Holton Lake delegated authority, what's the update on that? Nothing was mentioned about what's going on that. When is that going to be taken over?
So that's not me. I, I'm, I only do what I'm ordered to do by that committee. So that would be something I think that Commissioner Rus, or Commissioner Censor and Commissioner Wolfson would do.
Okay, so we'll talk about that in the unfinished business. Okay, great. And you'd mentioned options for Higgins on the lake levels. You know, there, there's a tragic accident on Higgins recently and...
Commissioner Ostergren, I need to actually stop you for just a second. Based on that email that you had actually sent out, we have forwarded on to our liability company, which means that is something that is now not to be discussed in public by the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Right now, right now, our, our levels are, have been for years and years and they still are illegally well below the legal level. And you just mentioned something about that you had given us options to help that out. What, what are those options? Because I'm not aware of those.
Sure. So initially, back in the spring, I had brought forth to you in the form of a resolution to be proposed against the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District, the repair and to basically start to finish for the Spicer Group unrestricted access to put in the, the plate for that. So that was the very first proposal that was brought forth. And I do believe at that time your concern was that there was pending litigation. So you didn't want to see that move forward and the rest of the boards didn't indicate any differently. So that didn't proceed forward.
However, however, I gotta, I gotta interrupt. However, just because there's not a special assessment district there, doesn't mean the county is not responsible.
Well, so I would certainly agree with you, but I didn't hear you ask me that either. You just said you wanted to wait until the litigation was done.
This wasn't on me. This was the entire board.
Since the board has that decision, that is not within my power to spend that much money without the board authorizing that to be done. Additionally...
What are the low-cost options? Because I understand rocks were removed from the...
The low-cost options were actually provided to you in the Spicer's report that they brought forth to the Board of Commissioners several months ago, that you do have those concerns about. So that's kind of stopped in its tracks right now as well, until the board determines that there's any of those options that you'd like to move forward with.
Well, we haven't, we haven't heard back from Spicer because we had questions on Spicer on that.
Right. And they, at their, at their discretion and their scheduling, obviously, one of the individuals was not available for the last three weeks. But they are doing that webinar for that information in the first week of October.
What are the, what are the low-cost options? Put rocks back in? I mean, what are the types of things that we can do to go to Eagle and, and talk to them about?
Oh, gosh. So to go to Eagle, you'll have to submit a permit. In order to submit a permit, you'll have to have a licensed engineer per statute to do that. So there certainly would be costs associated with that. So again, you're looking at studies and findings, no matter what. You have lots of concerns about rocks, which I, I'm assuming comes from your 2014 article in the paper.
No, not just that, not just that. The Jay Shemke testified here that the spillway in the dam was approximately letting through 100% more than it should be because of the scouring that Spicer reported back in 2010.
Sure, but we have a more recent report from a licensed engineer that states that there is no scouring.
Spicer was a licensed engineer back in 2010, weren't they?
They were, but they also have reported that there is no scouring. One of your biggest problems, I think, that you'll find...
The dam people also said that, that it was, that the, the dam was not in need of any repair. Then Spicer came out with a report later, said there's all kinds of stuff wrong with the dam.
I guess I don't know.
So what I'm saying is these reports are being picked and, you know, picked and chosen.
Let me ask you a question, Commissioner Ostergren. What is your proposed fix for Higgins Lake? What would you like to see happen?
I'm, what I'm asking is that we get something going on a proposed fix.
Absolutely, but I need the board to make a decision and tell me which way they'd like that money spent.
But you're the delegated authority.
And Jody is, does come from the board.
Okay.
We haven't given her direction. Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Correspondence.
Is she done with the Controller's report?
Correspondence, we have A through through M, it's in everybody's packets. Number 10, monthly department reports. EDC, Roscommon County Sheriff's Department, Roscommon County Animal Shelter. Number 11, visitors. We recognize. Yes.
Recognize Al Schultz. He hasn't been here for a while. And Al, it's good to see you again for all the stuff you've done for the county for decades. Thanks for being here today.
Thanks, Al. Number 12. Unfinished business, new business. A, Tucker's Day, Mark Milburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the very bottom of the packet, I propose that we honor Eleanor Tucker. And what I did is I wrote up a proposal that says, in special honor of Eleanor Tucker's 100th birthday, for her lifelong service and dedication to guide country core, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners here in Roscommon County, Michigan, September 28th, 2023, we recognize Eleanor Tucker Day. Eleanor Tucker, Mr. Chair and to the audience, was in the World War II during the Marine Corps. And there is going to be a get-together at the Roscommon County COA Thursday, September 20th. Public's invited. And it's our intent, if, if the board is so inclined, to allow me the privilege to do this, this resolution forward, that the chairman and I will both be there in attendance to recognize Ms. Tucker. Any questions, Mr. Chair?
Oh, not this time. Any other discussion on that?
Thank you, thank you all.
Number B is 2024 Wage Increase Non-Union. Jody.
So it's not really me, it's really you guys again. I know that last week there was a presentation by our Wage and Salary Committee and they brought a recommendation forth to you. And obviously, I haven't spoken to any of you as a group or as an individual about how you feel about that recommendation, what your thought processes are and where you would like to see us go, with, with the exception of Commissioner Milburn. I take that back. So really, I'm looking for you guys to have a discussion, so you can provide me that direction. What, what, what would you like to see me aim for? It's the budget, I guess.
This way, Jody, in two weeks, you'll have that direction.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. There is no motions or resolutions. Commit.
I have some old business.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The last meeting, there was a group of people here from Emery Road, concerns about Consumers Power taking right of ways. And you told them that we would, you'd look into it. Have we found out anything on that subject?
Mark, you spoke with them.
I, I talked to them afterwards, but in my, in my humble opinion, has nothing to do with us.
And it doesn't at this point.
Well, there's a lot of things that have nothing to do with us, like, for example, this gracious lady that has his birthday coming up and, and we're, we're going to be attending that. That has nothing...
But Consumer Powers, they're having public hearings on it, Eric.
Right. I mean, should... These are people in our county that are, that are being affected dramatically. I think we need to come, do something about making some kind of a stand with Consumers Power, passing a, a resolution and/or support.
What I can do, what I can do, I could supply everybody with a meeting date when they're going to meet at Roscommon Township.
Suggestion?
Excuse me.
Apparently, we have a contact person, Richard Castle, from Consumers Power. Could the chairman contact him for information of why they chose that route? Puts to a different route?
See, originally, they were going to go up Tower Hill Road, but they changed it to 2027.
Can we, can the chairman ask him to supply us with the information? Why that route?
I can do better than that. It's going to be at your next meeting. Mr. Chair, he's coming to discuss these things with you. He's actually put that request through to Julie just recently. So Julie has not been able to inform the chair about that, but he has asked to come before you and to discuss that information.
Sounds good.
Did you, Julie, did you get something yet? Wanted to include that? I'm actually, that information will be in there as well. So if we like Julie to make sure that this is also...
Yep.
Mr. Chair, in regards to the township, it's more of a township issue, not to overstep our boundary. Township issue, if the township is, is our involvement, we'd be happy to jump in. And I appreciate your comment, but really, it's a township issue.
It's a political issue.
It's a political issue, but at the end of the day, it's a township. The township in this regard, in my opinion, has more power than the board.
That could be, but it wouldn't hurt for, for these people to know that they have our support, that this should, this project shouldn't be going through on their road. I, I, I mean, it can't hurt.
I certainly can't hurt, but it is a township issue.
I, I'm not saying the project should or should not go through. I'm seeking information from Consumers.
Oh, they'll be here in two weeks. Committee report, Eric.
I have none.
Mark.
We went to the airport and much of us went down, myself and Danny, and we went down to the homecoming for the veterans for their hometown hero weekend on a... Oh, and I would like to make a suggestion. Mr. Seemack brought something up a couple weeks ago, and I think it was brought up, I think Michelle brought it up about a year ago. It's important for us to be maybe a little more definitive in this, as far as any reports, instead of just seeing that we went, to be more definitive, like the chairman and I went to airport, big thing there was the compass rose and some of the... Need support for us as commissioners, be a little more transparent. I mean, I know what happened, but it's probably a wise move for, matter of fact, it is a wise move for us, be a little more transparent. Be a little more verbal while we transpire as during... Boy, I have a share, thank you.
You're welcome. Darlene?
I had District Health. While in District Health, we talked about their strategic plan with six counties. We looked over the medical director, the physicians, director and the health officers' contracts and how to implement a possible wage study that they had done. I also had the substance use disorder meeting on Monday up in Gaylord. There were only two proposals that were discussed. Those were both for Emmett County. We also talked about the 2024 meeting schedule and talked about the amount of admissions that they have had and the number one causes, and number two causes, which seem to be increasing, which is alcohol and methamphetamine is the primary cause of admission.
Thank you. Rex?
I was at the hazardous waste site, collection site Saturday, loading tires. We took in over 380 tires again, which seems like a lot, but it's like, last time was 500. That program keeps a lot of tires out of the, out of the woods. I also noted when I was there, the electronics are, was the busiest of the whole thing. It's unbelievable how many TVs and computers come in to be re, taken care of. Also, in a back is township meeting, Vanessa was there presenting her emergency plan, did an excellent job in presenting that. She's been reaching out to all the townships to, to get them to accept this, so that we can move forward with that. And then as far as the lake study, lake committee, Darlene and I met yesterday.
Yesterday. We went over what we're going to put in for the ad. For the delegated authority position. We had some minor changes we wanted on it. I talked to Jody about it this morning. The ad's going to go out for two weeks. October fourth is going to be the deadline for sealed goods to come in. And that's where we stand on that.
Thank you.
Is this delegated authority, once we get one for Holden, is it going to be the same delegated authority that we're going to have for all three lakes?
It's our plan, yes.
It's the plan. Okay.
Excuse me. I had.
Can I just, Commissioner Wolfson, I just wanted to clarify because you had informed to me that we would be starting with as the SADS come on board. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I also attended the Airport Committee. Meeting, and that's all I had for the last two weeks, besides phone calls and emails. Public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes. Oh, you have to come up, identify yourself. Turn the mic on.
Never come up.
Thank you.
I just needed to clarify.
Name for the record.
Hi, my name is Terry Kleeney. I'm the Thirty Fourth Circuit Court Administrator. I'm here on behalf of Judge Bennett.
Thank you.
I just wanted, there was comment made earlier in the meeting, and I just want to clarify something. We will not be allowing food and snacks in the. He wanted me to let the general public know that this is a formal hearing and it will be treated like a formal hearing. So. Please don't bring snacks and food into our court.
So we can't sell peanuts?
No. Outside.
Any other public comment? Michelle?
I just wanted to make you aware. Oh, sorry, Michelle Stevenson, funny clerk. Anyhow.
I just get.
Um, I don't know if you're all aware or not, but August, is it fourteenth is the filing deadline. August fifteenth, so Tuesday, August fifteenth. Hot Lake Community Schools filed paperwork, so we do have a special election on November seventh. For a proposal for them. That is the only thing on the ballot, so it only affects part of the county and five townships in Mesaki County. Roscommon Township is going to practice early voting at this election, so that is the only township. For the Hot Lake Community Schools election that will be engaging in the early voting process for that. Come the presidential primary election in February or March, whichever it is, then everyone will be participating in that. So I'm working on getting information put together. Since there's some grant money available to offset the expenses and provide equipment for early voting. So just keep in mind that there's. Increased costs for elections moving forward. I know the township clerks are making their boards aware of it as well. So what that's going to cost, we don't know. So unfortunately, when we have already got. Eight budgets as it is, and we're going to have to. Going to be even tighter. So but I just wanted to make you aware of that. Yes.
Is how will the early voting process work? In other words, do you send ballots out? Do people have to come into the to the voting place and vote there?
It's so we're going to have absentee voting, which we've had forever, which is forty five days prior. The early voting is in person for nine days prior, so the second Saturday before the election date through Sunday before election.
They have to go into their precinct.
They have to go.
Show their ID.
Yes.
And fill the ballot out there and not take it home.
Correct. And they'll put it in the tabulator there, and the tabulator will be secured every night. And then reopened the next day for those nine days. So that's where it's. We need election inspectors. We need people to work elections because they have to have a minimum of three workers. For eight hours a day for nine days. Prior to the election and they have to cover that expense. So the presidential primary. Generally, there's reimbursement from the Presidential Primary Election Fund, so we'll get a lot of expenses. Reimbursed for that election. The school election, Hot Lake Community Schools will cover the cost of that election since that's the only thing and it's.
Do you estimate that cost to be?
It's hard to say. It's hard to say. I don't know what ballot costs are. We haven't had an election this year, so.
I mean, the ballots to run the to run the early voting.
Run the early voting.
Additional costs over and above what it used to be.
It depends and. I don't know.
The numbers are wrong right now because.
Every township pays a different wage. For their workers. But, you know, and then having the eight hours or the three hour, excuse me, three workers for eight hours a day. It all depends. I know, I think one of the townships had indicated it's going to probably be at least five thousand dollars a day. Or for the early voting.
These are mostly people that volunteer and come in and then they get paid.
Well, they don't volunteer.
Appointed. So election inspectors, they have to apply and then they're appointed by the Election Commission for each jurisdiction.
That's for everything, not just the early voting though.
Everything.
That would be for a normal election you have. So they're just going to have to work, be able to work.
It's a regular job.
Do we anticipate any problems with that?
Yeah, the clerks are terrified. They have a hard enough time because you have to try to balance. Your workers, you need, you have to try to balance your representation of Democrats and Republicans, because those are the primary parties. You have to have a balance there. And we've got townships who have struggled for years getting one or the other. And. So they do have the option to consolidate for early voting only. I know some of the townships are considering. Having, like, we've got Asable, Bacchus, and Nestor, all really small townships, not regular hours. Are looking to consolidate with Ridgefield Township, and that's only for the early voting. But to do that.
We might have have one booth for this township, one booth for that.
They would all go into the same tabulator. So we can program it with the programming. We can program it so it will read. Whatever ballot, because those ballots have timing marks on them. That indicates what precinct. What precinct ballot is going in there. So.
That will be confusing.
Oh, yes. But so there's a lot that we still don't know about it, but there's a and there's a lot going on and. You know, our our township clerks are working, I mean statewide, the township and city clerks and the county clerks are all. Working, trying to figure out, and we're still waiting a lot of it for direction from the state on what's allowed and what isn't allowed. And. We had to wait for the legislators to. Make up the rules for this legislation that was passed in November of twenty twenty two. So elections in twenty twenty four are going to be interesting. But I did just want to make you aware that there is a November seventh election, and I will be presenting at the next work session for candidates for Board of Canvassers. So because we have two that need to be appointed this year. And then I'll have that to be voted on at the first meeting in October, so then they get their feet wet in November with the first election.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Vanessa Varner, Roscommon County Emergency Management Director. I just wanted to give a reminder to everybody that the Michigan Fireman's Memorial Festival is this weekend. That event starts tomorrow with Family Night from four to eight at the training grounds, so. Anybody would like to go? There's a lot of a lot of people locally that have spent a lot of time trying to make this happen again, so we keep it happening.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Greg Seemack. I'm a Girish Township President. My my comment has to do with some of the conversation that I heard in the meeting today. And the first one is that there's going to be some action to hire a delegated authority. For the dams situations in the county. And I think I also heard that the the delegated authority won't be. Involved with any of the dam questions until after SADS are created. So what I'd like to suggest is I don't know why we wouldn't want that delegated authority to be involved. At once. Because it does seem we have some issues with the dams, and it would seem to me as if we're hiring a competent person to be involved with those. That those issues could be resolved, or at least there could be a start at resolving them from when that person's on board. So I I guess I would just want to suggest that that person be involved as early as possible rather than waiting for sad creations. And the second comment that I have is I understand that there was some question as to who originates or who would originate. The any conversation about. What projects can be done to the Higgins Lake Dam to try to solve the problem where it's been the water level has been so low. And it it appears as though there is some confusion as to whether the delegated authority should initiate that or the commissioners should initiate that. So if it is the commissioners that should initiate that, then I'd like to see some conversation about what things can be done. And what things we could undertake, rather than, it seems like we're putting it in a holding pattern. We've known that there were things that needed to be done or could be done. There have been questions about how the dam was operating. And if we could be handling those things, we should, I believe, have been handling those things for months now. And it doesn't seem as though there's been any movement forward. So I I'd like to hear if it's at all possible for the meeting adjourns, at least some discussion about those two issues. Some discussion between the commissioners to understand why we might want to have a Special Assessment District. Or why we might want to have a delegated authority created before all the Special Assessment Districts might be done. And also. Where the responsibility is for actually starting to move forward with a consideration about what to do with the Higgins Lake.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom, Andy? With that being said, public comment done. Number sixteen, the German. Second. Always.
Were you, did you want to talk?